Second, I'd like to report that all committee members are present. I want our agenda tonight is financing bills. We're going to receive, should have received a copy of this month's financing bills and comments, questions or concerns. Alderman Wood.
Hi, Tom. I just wanted to ask, this is for Mr. Saradis. How are sales tax revenues for doing?
The revenues through September were down eighteen percent.
I saw the article, the paper, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions or concerns on financing bills? Okay, so you've done with something like a sponsor?
I've done this.
Sponsor by Alderman Wood, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Crawford, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, deposes. If finances and bills are approved, we will be referred to tonight's regular meeting. I will make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Robinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, deposes.
Four minutes now, Paul.
Four minutes ago. I know. Was that too fast?
A little bit.
A little bit, sorry. When it's that short, it's like, you know, it becomes like a challenge.
Figured out how to do this.
Just tell me that now.
Do you really?
I wonder if we get a, I wonder if we get a quicker bike for that, we put up a stand in the middle there.
Maybe. Maybe. It's as tall as it gets, though. There. Get one of them, maybe a cage. Feel like, feel like Phil Collins or something. I can hear. Yeah, but you gotta like swing your arms, you gotta kinda be like an animal.
I went and, we went and saw him before the, the COVID hit.
What was that chick band that you saw beforehand? Did you take your wife to some like Atlantis Morris set or some concert?
Celine Dion.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Um, but we saw Phil Collins. Now, we've seen him three times, alright, but we saw him right before COVID hit, so like December.
Okay.
He's like, uh, he's like in a wheelchair. He can't even walk. He performed, he didn't even play the drums.
Really?
He performed sitting down, you know, it was like, it was like watching Phil Collins perform at an old age home. He performed sitting in a big cushy comfy chair.
I would want my money back.
He comes like hobbling out, like, you know, you know how Willy Wonka comes like hobbling out?
More like how, uh, like how they rendered, uh, how South Park rendered, uh, like Rod Stewart?
I don't know.
No?
I don't remember that.
And now lead singer, Rod Stewart, and then he brought him out in a wheelchair and he's like, Rod Stewart made poopy. Like, and just.
I don't remember that. But, uh, he, um, he has a fractured, he has a, his back is all from playing the drums. His back is all, he's had like twenty surgeries and, I mean, luckily his vocals were great, but every so often it would kinda like, he'd feel sad. Cause it was like, he's performing, you know, at a retirement home or something, sitting down.
So you went to the Phil Collins pity show, huh?
Yes. And I think the title of the show was Not Dead Yet.
Not Dead, well, pretty damn close.
But, uh, what was impressive though, was his son has picked up the reins on the drums and he's, he's about twenty years old. Played it off, it was just awesome, phenomenal, just incredible.
Phil Collins has a twenty year old son?
Mm-hmm.
I feel like his grandkids would be twenty years old.
I'm pretty sure he's got some of those too. It was interesting, though. It was, I mean, it was good. It was disappointing. Should've got half my money back, I wanted him to play the drums.
Unless you're not even standing. I want half my money back.
He might've come out on one of those scooters.
Like a, like the Wolfher Brimley rascal?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm on a call order, the regular meeting, the common council Tuesday, September twenty-second, we'll quickly call roll. Alderman Wood?
Here.
Alderman Tanis?
Here.
Alderman Doughty?
Here.
Alderman Crawford?
Here.
Alderman Robinson?
Here.
Alderman Anastasia?
Here.
And Alderman Waddles?
Here.
Please rise for the invitational.
Dear Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here tonight. May everything we do begin with your inspiration and continue with your help. With as you add your guiding throughout this meeting, that all our thoughts and actions will reflect your holy will. And that you grant us the grace below you and our neighbors more perfectly. In your name we pray, amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the holy United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Just tough to speak into the mic that time.
Reading, correcting and approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting.
The regular meeting of the Olean Common Council was held on Tuesday, September eighth, twenty twenty, at six thirty-five PM. Present, Alderman Waddles, Alderman Wood, Alderman Tanis, Alderman Doughty, Alderman Crawford, Alderman Robinson and Alderman Anastasia.
Okay, I have to make a motion to approve the minutes. Second, I'll have a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Crawford, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, deposes. Okay, the minutes are approved, we move on to committee reports and unfinished council business. We have none. Communications from the mayor.
Thank you, Bob. We have a special proclamation tonight honoring gentleman Dan McGraw, who is the recipient of the State of New York Police Juvenile Officers Association Youth Officer of the Year. Thanks for reading the proclamation.
Whereas, State of New York Police Juvenile Officers Association, S N Y P J O A, recognized an outstanding New York State School Resource Officer, who is nominated and selected for extraordinary commitment and dedication to the youth of the school, community and juvenile justice. Whereas, the State of New York Police Juvenile Officers Association honors this individual of the Youth Officer of the Year. Whereas, Officer Dan McGraw, a twenty-nine year veteran of the Olean Police Department, has served as the School Resource Officer of the City of Olean School District for four years and was named the twenty-twenty Youth Officer of the Year. Whereas, Officer McGraw has gone above and beyond in his position as School Resource Officer. He works with the students, families and staff to find solutions to problems that arise in the district. Whereas, Officer McGraw was nominated because of his professionalism, empathy and passion. He was nominated because he has forged relationships with students and students listen to him. Whereas, Officer McGraw received this award because he goes extra mile to help students and he is a strong disciplinarian when necessary. And because he is update, energetic and proactive, he has become an outstanding role model for the youth of our community. Therefore, I will be on J L O, Mayor of the City of Olean, and behalf of the Common Council and on behalf of the Common Council recognize and commend Officer Dan McGraw of this day, September twenty-second, twenty twenty. He is an asset to the City of Olean Police Department and the City School District and the citizens of our community.
We're honored to have you tonight, not only Alderman, but we have Devine Leacock, who is the County Sheriff's County Sheriff's Director. Devine is the Vice President of the State of New York Police Juvenile Officers Association. Hi, Mr. Bush, please. And at the function that was held in Lake, uh, Lake George here a few weeks ago, Devine was, uh, was, uh, I had the honor of reading the role of office to Devine and several of the other officers who left. And my history of the State of New York Police Juvenile Officers, as I'm a, not only a past president, I'm also a past executive director. And I was honored to receive this award in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-eight, so it's all going back in ways. But Dan, on behalf of the City of Olean, we are pleased and we are honored that you are the Youth Officer of the Year for the State of New York Police Juvenile Officer two thousand and twenty. This is a fact. Uh, Dr. Andrew Ano was in the, Principal Jeff Andrew Ano was here. And Jeff, funny enough, we have, uh, third members available, please. Uh, Jack Supervisor for Dan, who's the Jason Madison, our Youth Officer, uh, under pressure, uh, Velasquez, Captain Velasquez. So, uh, I'm pleased, very pleased, and you were wonderful to him. And he was interviewed by Channel seven today, so that'll air, that'll, uh, air at six and five, and I want to get him a wedding. So, congratulations, Dan.
Thank you, Bill. Any other community?
Uh, just, uh, with the, with the closing of, uh, possibly closing of Farwell, uh, site up there, the county site in Farwell, I've been getting calls about where people are going to, uh, take their, their garden stuff and, uh, handle, uh, plants and that. So I talked with Bob Ring, and it looks like, uh, the, the Solace has one more week of, uh, I think it's on the thirtieth, the last Wednesday. They will be collecting yard waste, so, uh, we're gonna open up Front Street two Saturdays in October. It won't be the first Saturday, it'll be, uh, I believe it's the, uh, the second, the seventeenth, or the eleventh and the seventeenth, six of mine. But we'll be making an announcement on that, so that residents of the City of Olean will be able to take their yard waste there until we get this all figured out, so, uh, just, uh, thank you.
No other community?
Thank you, thank you, Bob.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Laney's community?
We have none.
City official reports?
One-time report of the city auditor, month ended August twenty twenty. Quarter report of the city auditor, three months ended August thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Uh, proposed legislations and referrals?
PL fifty-two dot twenty by Mayor Elio, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, September twenty-second, twenty twenty, forward motion by Council President. PL fifty-three dot twenty by Mayor Elio, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, September twenty-second, twenty twenty, forward motion by Council President. PL fifty-four dot twenty by Mayor Elio, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, September twenty-second, twenty twenty, forward motion by Council President. PL fifty-five dot twenty by Mayor Elio, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, September twenty-second, twenty twenty, forward motion by Council President.
Okay, uh, before we open the public comment section, I'd first like to offer, uh, offer an opportunity, if anyone on the council would like to make a comment, please do so at this time. Okay, so you've done, although, please read the statement.
The public comment portion of the Common Council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community the opportunity to publicly list their views for their concern or to provide input personally to any issue affecting city politics. Additionally, the mayor, Common Council members and city department heads encourage me to person, personal questions to contact Dan and their officers.
Okay, that being said, I will open the public comment section. If you'd like to make a comment, please approach the podium, state your name and address, and go ahead, man.
Hey there, um, I'm Raye Williams. I live at three twenty-five North Fifth Street, Olean. I also own property at three twenty-seven North Fifth Street, Olean. Um, the reason I'm here tonight is I received a call yesterday from the Water Department um, to advise me that I have water running at my property at three twenty-seven North Fifth Street. Clearly, this is not the city's fault that the water is running, however, it had been running at three hundred gallons per hour for eleven days. That is a cost of one thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents. Um, I have a serious issue that this took eleven days. I think we have the technology in the city that somehow, I was told that they don't know what to look for unless they're looking for it. But somehow they found it after eleven days. Um, there's gotta be a better way. There's gotta be some way to catch this sooner, some reports, some way of sorting a report, some way of prioritizing, um, something that doesn't look right on these reports. Some way of letting residents know prior than eleven days that they just wasted eighty-five thousand gallons of water. That I now owe one thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty cents. I wanna say I'm very thankful to Bill. I emailed him and asked, you know, cause I'm gonna make my tenant pay for this, obviously, cause she didn't let me know that her toilet was running. But I asked Bill, can I make installments on this without penalties or fees? He said yes, I truly appreciate that, but I think we need to come up with a plan. Somebody, I'm asking you guys to work with the Water Department and figure out a way that they can prioritize and let residents know if there's an issue. I mean, we, we spent all this money to create this new system that we can read up to the minute, she can see when I turn that water off. When I, I was on the phone with her, she's telling me I went into the apartment and turned the water off on the toilet, she can see it immediately. If she can see that immediately, it should not take eleven days to let somebody know that there's an issue. I mean, had there been nobody there, my property could've been destroyed if it was a real leak. I mean, you know, and I know there's a way, I know, because I've had problems at my house where it was leaking and they, I mean, they let me know in like two days. So I don't know if it's luck of the draw, how they figured this out, but somebody's gotta figure something out. I mean, there's gotta be a way. We have technology. There's absolutely no reason why this should take eleven days, eighty-five thousand gallons of water and a water bill for fourteen hundred dollars. So, I'm asking each and every one of you to please look at this. Please, look at this and figure it out, cause I'm sure, I'm not the only person that's got this issue. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I am the community commissioner now. Right now, I'm currently the commissioner for the Olean Women's League for softball. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about cornice fields. I know I only have about five minutes, so I wrote some stuff down to read off. I also gave everyone a packet, um, because some people, uh, based off the conversations, um, weren't really familiar when they haven't been down there. So I made pictures of what field we're talking about. For decades, both the women's and men's league, um, have been a staple of adult activities and, um, in this area. And, uh, right now, we have three leagues. Each league has between two hundred and ten, two hundred and fifty players on it. We have, uh, we are running leagues every league day from May to August. There's discussion on, uh, um, on bringing back a COVID that you guys don't base. Um, we also want to host more tournaments that would bring in, um, out of town people. Back in two thousand and seventeen, uh, lighting struck on the White Summer Marcus Field. Since then, the league has been able to use that field minimally and no night games. So that leaves us with one field, cornice one, um, for lights. And, uh, we have eighteen games, uh, our seventh game, they run late. We have to either wait until the next day, then the next, uh, league day, or move the game. And it's also a safety issue. The lighting, lighting issue along with bathroom facilities has been discussed before, um, when I was looking up, um, online, and that's with the council back in two thousand and fourteen. Um, and then again, um, with the Olean Local Development Corporation, um, back in two thousand and eighteen, that there is a need for lighting on, um, those fields. Uh, there are, our greatest need right now is the lighting on additional fields. There are other things that we would love to see happen. Um, the batter boxes on all the fields need updated. Um, I also have some information on that with packets. Um, this has also become a safety issue, um, over the last few years. Um, we have another field that we would like to utilize, it's down there, it's just currently on, and that's Field Ten. Um, that field right now, um, needs an infield, um, skinning of the infield and the stuff. Currently, all these kitchen and paper for the bathrooms for the season, these bathrooms are used by anyone using the park as well. There's a real need, not only by the leagues, but for park owners down there on that side of the grounds for facilities. Um, there is a building in place at Marcus that has two bathrooms and a concession stand, but it's being used minimally and I don't think the concessions is being used at all. But when it was active, when we were down there, um, they, they worked well. Marcus has a press box attached to it too, we would like to have one down at Cornice for featured games on one of the fields. These, uh, updates would make it easier to make tournaments more inviting. Cause at the end of the day, our leagues, they bring in revenue. Um, we had a breakdown, just a base minimal, um, base for revenue. And if you had, uh, fifty people at one game and they all were paying twenty dollars when they leave the field, they go somewhere in Olean, you're looking at at the end of the week with all these thirty thousand dollars. The people, and that's the minimum, there's way more people down there for games. And as we had these fields updated, if we were able to utilize the other field, they won't hurt so much as being with Marcus. Um, and it would be nice to have all the fields in one complex to play. I mean, at the end of the day, we, we want to bring in more out of town people, we wanna spend our money here, we wanna, um, have fun here, play ball here. Uh, we bring something to the table. I think that is it. But I just, we were, we're really in the house, we're really to do fundraising, look up grants or anything. I just think that we, there's more grants or stuff out there that we can do to get these things to happen, because we have just, it's been on the table, it's been in these minutes that it's been discussed, but this kinda gets, the can get kicked down the road and we just want it to be more of a priority and help us help you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone else?
I just wonder, I just, she says up there from discussing the vast, uh, is this something that we could refer to Chris Dariel, who looked at the crossway in Springs? Just to see what the crops now, so it's gonna be of these students. Chris from Berks.
I'm from D P W.
D P W, Mark. We've, uh, we have, uh, different, uh, grants that we didn't get, uh, through one by the state development. Uh, we've been planning, we've been looking at things for this, uh, down here. Those of you, you were, uh, those of you who were here last year or here and had, well, we've got a plan for another walking trail around, around Cornice and, uh, we need to get funding for that. So, we're, we're looking for, you know, what I could do, what we could do, we know, uh, everything that's been updated, so it's a commander, uh, putting it on the record. Short answer is yes, we will. I know, um, it was gonna be, when we checked in and put lights there, it was gonna be quite costly to get it to rest around these states, yeah, down there. So, we actually had, uh, electrician union that was, uh, willing to help us out with some of the labor. So it's all, it's all, uh, things that we've been working on, it's just a matter of finding, finding some help.
There isn't, like, I'm surprised there wouldn't be electrical services that could be tied into from the infrastructure surrounding the good times, but, um...
I don't know whatever electrician's supposed to be.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, good question, uh, something, uh, I think we definitely consider outside of the meeting.
Oh, I do, I have, uh, one year announcement.
Oh, yeah.
Right now, of course. The Equity and Inclusion Committee has been established. The, uh, ones that were selected to be on that committee have all agreed to be on it. So, right now, we have, uh, the chairman of this committee will be Alderman Lindert. From community member will be Chris Brown, Charlie Daniels, uh, Daniel Dayton, Michelle Robinson. Alternatives will be Gary Harvey and Richard Snyder and, uh, the other council member will be John Crawford. We, uh, we still have to get two, uh, city employees and we're, we're working on that. But we're, we're ready to go, so, uh, the committee is now, uh, now official, so...
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, uh, seeing done, I would call the public comment section closed, move on to financing bills.
Um, by Alderman Wood, seconded by Alderman Crawford. The auditor has processed bills and claims against the City of Olean as per list submitted to each Alderman and recommends experiment thereof. Whereas, the auditor has presented to the Common Council bills and claims against the City of Olean, totally one point one million dollars. So the board, uh, and recommends experiment thereof. Now, therefore, be resolved that the safety and all paid by auditor is allowed and the auditor is paid by authorized and directed through to warrants or dependents thereof and be announced at half the piece of respect in plan.
Okay, uh, we did discuss financing bills in committee at all, any comments, questions or concerns? Casey, you've done, will be, please call roll. Alderman Wood?
Yes.
Alderman Tanis?
Yes.
Alderman Doughty?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Waddles?
Yes.
Resemption.
Resolution?
Resolution sixty-nine dot twenty, PL fifty-two dot twenty, to authorize the mayor to exit to the cost plus paid fee consulting agreement with the CNS companies for a construction, uh, so, uh, division administration portion of a C O P pavement construction project at the Carreras County, Olean Airport. We also done a sponsor for that.
Okay, so, uh, this was discussed, may it, uh...
Okay, we put everybody, uh, you want to add, uh, to everybody on this, I'm trying to get this thing to be right now.
Yeah?
Uh, you want to give everybody an update on this? Let's discuss the market.
Uh, this is, uh, raised FAA grant, um, this would be for the construction and construction administration portion of the grant uh, with our consulting firm, CNS M P's. Uh, like I said, this is ninety-five percent funded. Uh, originally, two weeks ago, we thought this project could be completed in the fall, uh, but it likely not start until this spring, and it will be done then. Uh, it's roughly a three hundred thousand dollar project. The project is a hundred percent funded through the care that, uh, our fifteen thousand dollar foundation is fully funded this year at that.
Okay. Uh, any, any comments, questions or concerns?
I've got a quick, I've got a quick question.
Yeah, please, Alderman Crawford.
What is the status of the airport today? Um, and how, has it been used during the shutdown? What's, what's the, uh, the usage been over the past six months?
You mean like the planes that are, that's regularly used, um, similar to, you know, before COVID and stuff for? And we have, um, some protections in place for planes that are coming in from states that, um, are under the mandatory quarantine. But, you know, a lot of local people are still using the airport, um, you know, it's being maintained, and we're still planning projects as we...
A lot of local Olean people?
I don't know, it's our people, uh, our people around.
Alright, thank you.
Um, are the planes still, do we have any, uh, planes or people for that?
Yes, they're all. There's a radius that we, but, you know, often times we can get someone in, uh, several, uh, times, right?
Can we change the PL from a number to the John Crawford Loves the Airport PL?
Okay, any other, uh, comments or questions or concerns?
I just have one quick question, does the county still contribute to the airport?
We get, uh, we get, uh, about seventeen thousand in accounting, uh, annually for, uh, for the airport. But, uh, we're working on creating more, uh, there, we have to, we... And there, we have, we just turned a application, or is it Olean, is it Olean? Okay, we just turned an application for a less larger, uh, more revenue from the county for the, for the operation of the, of the airport, so we'll see what happens.
Okay, so I think years ago, I thought the county's contribution was much more than 17,000. I think it was more like around 50,000, wasn't it?
For a while, they just, um, contributed to sort of projects, and then all of a sudden it went down to 17,000.
I'm sure a lot of thought went into that 17,000.
Yeah.
Lot of serious thought behind that.
Lot of hard calculations.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, uh, any other comments or questions or concerns? Okay, see none will be clerked, please call roll.
Alderman.
Oh, we do need sponsors, I'm sorry. Excellent call. Uh, Alderman Pannas, who'd like to sponsor? Someone like to second?
I'll second.
And by Alderman Dory.
He jumped in there ahead of me.
Oh, sorry, John.
Now, clerk please call roll.
Alderman Wood?
Yes.
Alderman Pannas?
Yes.
Alderman Dory?
Certainly.
Alderman Crawford?
No.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anistega?
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion case six to one. Resolution 70-20, PL 52-20, to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement in this unified court system in the City of Olean for court cleaning and manual repairs. We also deny this sponsor.
Okay, so this we definitely did discuss recently in committee. Uh, does anybody have any comments or questions or concerns? Okay, see none? Uh, would someone like to sponsor? Alderman Wood, would you like to sponsor? Second, aye. Alderman Gonzalez. Yeah, please call roll. Alderman Wood?
Yes.
Alderman Pannas?
Yes.
Alderman Dory?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anistega?
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion case seven to zero. Resolution seven, anyone that, when we, PL 54-20, resolution to authorize the mayor to sign an act on intergovernmental agreement between the City of Olean and Fire Department and New York City Public Security Emergency Services for the temporary launch of fire suppression form equipment. We also don't have this sponsor.
Okay, so this one we also discussed last week in committee. Uh, any comments, questions, or concerns? See none? Would someone like to sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
By Alderman Dory, seconded by Alderman Wood. Clerk please call roll.
Alderman Wood?
Yes.
Alderman Pannas?
Yes.
Alderman Dory?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anistega?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion case seven to zero. Resolution 70-20, PL 55-20, resolution to create a capital fund for the cyber attack insurance of New York. We also don't have this sponsor.
Okay, so we did discuss this in committee, uh, last week as well. Uh, any comments, questions, or concerns?
So, just a quick question, Bill, for clarification. So, this is the amount that we received from the payout from the insurance company, and so this will set up a capital fund that we'll draw on, on an annual basis to pay the additional premium. Is that the plan?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, would someone like to sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
Sponsor by Alderman Crawford, who has second. Alderman Wood, uh, would clerk please call roll.
Alderman Wood?
Yes.
Alderman Pannas?
Yes.
Alderman Dory?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anistega?
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion case seven to zero.
Uh, I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I have second? Second by Alderman Anistega, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, be opposed.